Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Today is August 8th and it is 5:15 PM. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the Pledge of Legions. Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
First order of business, we have, gentlemen, is to approve the minutes from July 11th, 2023, regular session to approve the minutes of July 18th, 2023, executive session, minutes of July 25th, 2023, regular session, and minutes of July 25th, 2023, executive session. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I was absent at these meetings.
I'll make the motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I appreciate that, Mr. Warner.
Yep.
All right, we're gonna have to take a recess because our appointment's at 5:15. We have some winning team recognitions for AYSA, and we will be stepping out to the front steps of the town hall, so I will recess, subject to the call of the chairman.
Good evening. Thank you all, parents and players, for being here. By way of introduction, my name is David Warner and member of the Board of Selectmen. I'm joined by Chairman Kevin Gasper, who's on the Board of Selectmen, and Selectman Bob Hinckley. Thank you for allowing us to do this for you and for the players. AYSA has a special place in my heart. My boys have played in the league, starting off at a very early age, and it's great to see the seventh and eighth graders really achieve and seeing some of the older boys achieve some great accomplishments out on the soccer field. But I think what really impresses us and me the most isn't necessarily the victory, it's how Acushnet players always handle themselves, whether they're on the fields in Acushnet or in some other town, or in a larger state or larger stage at a mass tournament of champions tournament. And so with that, you know, Acushnet has, we've really worked well with the leadership with the Acushnet soccer. In my opinion, we now have some of the best municipal facilities in the area. It's a, not very many communities have the expertise of a golf course superintendent helping to grow the grass. So I think that's just, again, a leadership, a testament to the leadership of the league, the past presidents, and now the new leadership, and we want to be a continued partner with you. So with that, I'd like to introduce Chairman Gasper, who will talk about the citations, what we're gonna present, and then we'll bring up each team. They'll file in, we'll take a nice photo, and then we have to get back to business of the town. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chairman Gasper.
Thank you, Selectmen Warner. So, congratulations. Congratulations to all of our young adults. I do have a citation. I'm gonna read the citation once. I hope that the young folks around, can they hear me around the corner? I'll go over there. I don't care too much about the camera. They can hear us fine over there. So I got a couple of citations here for the coaches. The first one is for Mr. Olivera, and it says, "Be it known that the Acushnet Board of Selectmen hereby extends its congratulations to Coach Olivera in recognition for the exceptional coaching leadership in driving your winning team to the South Shore Soccer League Championship. Our congratulations extends to leading your team into placing in the final four at the Massachusetts Tournament of Champions awarded this day, August 8th, 2023." You can see the citation. And again, the same citation goes out to Coach Bass. Boss, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Here we are. Congratulations. Now, I'm gonna read a citation once for all of our young adults in the seventh, eighth grade division. Put my glasses back on, so I don't mess it up. "Be it known that the Acushnet Board of Selectmen hereby extends its congratulations to the individual's name in recognition for the exceptional athletic excellence in winning the South Shore Soccer League Championship. Our congratulations extends to placing in the final four at the Massachusetts Tournament of Champions awarded this day, August 8th." And I'm gonna have Selectman Warner read off the names that are here today. Jacob Antonio. On the team but not present today, Christian Ayala. Daniel Batella. Daniel Burgess. Someone who's like a third son to me, Thomas Buss. Not present, Ethan Cabral. Not present, Jordan Correa. Not present but on the team, Dante Durat Mata. Acushnet's very own, Cross Estrella. Not here today, Jake Fernandez and Luke Fernandez. Lucas Martins. Present, Ethan Moco. Lucas Olivera. Rocco Pelosi. Preston Pereira. Owen Repose. Max Rodrick. Van Spicer. And on the team but not here, Tyler Viveras. So, gentlemen, if you would pile in the stairs, we can take a nice group photo for your parents. Lucas in the front.
Yes, sir. We need to get in the front. VIP access, all the way in the front.
All right, guys, make sure you thank your parents and your coaches, all right? Congratulations. Happy high school seasons, let's come back and win it.
Thank you.
Yeah, after the kids. Good luck, guys. So, thank you, Selectmen. Mr. Bass.
Mr. Bass, thank you.
So, again, again, everyone, we have two coaches to recognize here. "Be it known that the Acushnet Board of Selectmen hereby extends its congratulations to Coach Garcia in recognition for his exceptional coaching leadership in driving your winning team to the South Shore Soccer League Championship. Our congratulations extends to leading your team into placing in the final four at the Massachusetts Tournament of Champions awarded this day, August 8th." To Coach Garcia. And again, to the players, "Be it known that the Acushnet Board of Selectmen hereby extends its congratulations to in recognition for exceptional athletic excellence in winning the South Shore Soccer League Championship. Our congratulations extends in placing in the final four at the Massachusetts Tournament of Champions awarded this day, August 8th, 2023." Mr. Hinckley will read off the names.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Anthony Aguilar. Not present, Benjamin Avendano. Venison Barbosa. Tyler Chin. Not present, Anderson Cruz. Also not present, Jack Cunha. Austin Daggett. Eden Daggett. Brandon Delia.
These handshake's are much stronger.
Kevin Herrera. Ricky Flores. Not present, Kevin Herrera. Not present, Alexis Martinez. Not present, Angel Martinez. Not present, Dominic Piper. Jason Riz. Evandro Radic. Sean Silver. Jaden Sembard Jr. Kevin Susan. Ronaldo Trinidad Jr. Brennan Vila.
Thank you all for coming today. Thank you all. I call the meeting back to order. First order of business on the new business is a letter from the interim treasurer-collector trying to clean up the general ledger for personal property taxes dating back to 2001. It goes through 2019 for us to clean up some personal property taxes. Attached to the schedules of uncollectible taxes for the years 2001 to 2019 in which balances are too old to collect. By abating these years, the general ledger will be up to date and we can move forward with a collection plan. I respectfully ask that you approve these abatements, and I believe those are roughly in the amount of just over $18,000 for all the individual personal property taxes. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the interim treasurer-collector to refer uncollectible personal property taxes from 2001 to 2019 to the vote of assessors for abatement to clear the uncollectible amounts off the general ledger, thus bringing the general ledger up to date.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Second order of business on the new business is the appointment of Kristen Flynn to the finance committee. I know that the finance committee has been struggling to get people to join over the last year, year and a half, possibly even more, and that it's even more troubling even when you do have certain members for them to make certain meetings because of the time of year that they really get busy. We do have Kristen Flynn has a letter of interest. She just writes, "I am writing to express my interest in joining the Acushnet FinCon. I understand there is an opening on the committee, and I would like very much to be considered for that appointment. I've been a resident of Acushnet for over 40 years. I was educated at Acushnet Elementary School and Ford Junior High School. For the last 16 years, she served as business manager for the Acushnet schools. She is extremely vested in the town of Acushnet and wants to continue serving the town that has been her and her family's home for many years. She believes she will be a positive addition to the FinCon. She has a bachelor's degree in economics and accounting from the College of Holy Cross and a master's of business administration from Bryant University. She holds Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Superintendent and School Business Administrator certifications, I apologize, in addition to the Mass Public Purchasing Official Certification. Her education and experience given her strong municipal finance background. In addition, during her time working for the town, she has fostered many positive working relationships with many, if not all, of our town department heads. She has gained an understanding of the departments from attending the department head meetings over the years and believes that she can be a positive and helpful addition to the finance committee should you wish to appoint me. Thank you for your consideration to this letter." And we do have this Kristen Flynn and her husband in the audience. Kristen, do you have anything you want to say to the board? I think the letter stands on its own merits. I think all of us know you very well and appreciate your commitment to the town of Acushnet.
I appreciate you reading the letter because that sums up, you know, I think that my education and my experience in municipal finance, accounting, operations, human resources, and my commitment to the town for almost 48 years now, that speaks for itself. And I, you know, welcome the opportunity to continue to work for the town of Acushnet. My family has always been a strong volunteer in the town of Acushnet, and I look forward to continuing that if appointed. So I thank you for your consideration.
No problem. And thank you for your commitment to our community. Gentlemen?
Yeah, Kristen, thank you for stepping forward. You know, I've got a deep appreciation and affection for the family. Your dad's one of my favorite people of all time, and, you know, Dave.
Mine, too.
Great public servant. I think you'd be an outstanding addition. One thing I do, you know, as a former employee, if there's any conflict with the school department, I'm sure that that'll be resolved.
Absolutely.
But I look forward to your, you know, to your participation and commitment to the town on the finance committee. So thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
Kristen, thank you for wearing a hat and a ring. Finance is, if not one of the most important parts of this town and how it operates. And I know Chairman Boucher really wanted people that know what they're doing and are willing to really dig in and help, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure he does as well.
All right. With that all being said, is there a motion to appoint Kristen Flynn to the finance committee?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I look forward to being part of the team. Thank you very much.
You just need to be swarmed by the town clerk, okay, before you start attending meetings. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you. I apologize, I do have to leave. I have a family commitment to get to.
That's okay, this isn't a finance committee. This is not a finance committee, baby, so you can be excused.
Thank you.
The next order of business is something that I know Selectman Hinckley and Mr. Kelly have been working on, so I'll just turn it over either to Selectman Hinckley or Mr. Kelly, who just asked me, CBA subunits and library holidays.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kelly and I sat down with Scott.
Tabara.
Tabara, with the ASME Union. Because there are multiple different types of employees, everybody was rolled into one and made it a little difficult to deal with holidays, difference with library, clothing stipends, and random other small little details. So we put together essentially memorandum where we would break down the ASME contract into four different units. So it would be clerical employees of the town would be Unit A, library would be Unit B, custodians and maintenance employees would be Unit C, and dispatchers for the police and fire would be Unit D. Essentially, it's just an easier way to, if we have to fine tune any particular holidays or scheduling conflicts, we don't have to pull in every single department. And Mr. Kelly put it together pretty well. There wasn't much change other than putting the units in and actually breaking down different holidays for each department.
So we do have a holiday breakdown for, I would take Unit B, the library?
Yep.
In front of us? And it's just a little, I understand what you're saying because the library does have different, much different hours than what town hall employees do. And that's where the majority of the ASME employees are held is within town hall and buildings. So we're just looking for a motion to approve the holiday schedules for 2023, '24, and '25.
We're going to, it's a consensus of the board to approve. Once you approve, we'll present a document to ASME. They approve it, sign it, and then it comes back to you for the signature.
So no action necessary on this, just an update?
Just an update, and if there's no objection from the board.
Selectmen Warner?
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it as well.
All right.
What's being presented tonight, anyway? The discussion we just had.
Okay. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley. Electric vehicles. Pretty self-explanatory. I guess we're working on a timeline. That's something that we did through, I believe, the Green Energies Community Grant way back in the day, and we were doing some funding there. There's a buyout clause for the two Chevy Bolts in the amount of, and we have to get that back to, I guess, finances right away because it looks like the buyout figure is only good until Friday. And that's from General Motors. We have two of their GM Bolts that are relatively new with very little miles on it. Each one of them, to buy them out, would be $20,564. And then we have a Nissan Leaf that's the conservation agent's vehicle right now for his use, and that one's kind of, doesn't have high mileage, but it's not the greatest car. And I also know that, I guess, maybe a year ago, maybe less than that, the wiring harness was chewed out of that by squirrels or mice or whatever. And it'd be an electric vehicle. It did go through a repair. I don't know all the jits of warranties and everything else, but I know it was a little bit of a fiasco with that vehicle. And I read through some of their terms of the buyout where Nissan would have to buy it out from the lease company, then sell it to us. I spoke with Mr. Bobola because one of the Chevy Bolts is for the building inspector. I spoke with Andy Bobola, our building commissioner. He has informed me that he does not use that vehicle. He likes his truck. He needs a four-wheel drive to go on certain inspections. He's got all this gear in the back of the truck. Makes no sense for him to even think about considering using that vehicle. So it would be, my recommendation is to buy the two Chevy's Bolts because they're in great shape and they only have a couple thousand miles on them. And release the Nissan Leaf back to the lease company and tell them they can have it back, and then we can take one of the Bolts and turn it over to the conservation agent of FDB. But I think that's probably the best route to go instead of spending the extra money on buying out a car. That's gonna need tires and things of the like.
I agree. Just a quick question. Sorry, I don't really answer. Do the vehicles stay on the town hall campus, right?
Correct.
They don't go home with employees or any of that business?
No, sorry. Nope.
Nope.
Not unless they get permission from the Board of Selectmen. We've never agreed on permission, just wanted to make sure. So that's that. Is the board inclined? I think, Mr. Kelly, we would have to get a reserve fund transfer because of the nature of the date that we have here, so we'd have to do something quick and then replenish.
$41,128.
That is correct. So that's an unwritten. If we want to move forward, it would cost us $41,128 to buy out the two Bolts. I think it's a good deal. I think they're good little cars for us, and we can't go without the electric vehicles for our department heads to use. You're just gonna get hit with mileage and everything else. So I would prefer to buy the two out like all of the Nissan Leafs. So is there a motion to buy out the two GM vehicles and turn over the Nissan Leaf?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly, do you need a motion to, oh, we just see the reserve fund transfers coming forward, and we'll have to replenish the reserve fund come Fall Town Meeting.
I've talked to the accounting department. We can process this, and we have enough that we can take care of in the Fall Town Meeting.
Okay, very good, thank you. A motion was made. Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Hinckley?
Aye.
Okay, very good. The Apple Peach Festival, it says, "One-day liquor license." It is for one day, but it's for two days in a row. From the Lions Club, we do this every year for them. All-alcoholic beverages from, for September 9th and September 10th, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Is there a motion to approve the all-alcoholic liquor license, special license for the Lions Club for September 9th and September 10th, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Apple Peach Festival Safety Committee. Mr. Kelly, you have anything? Mr. Hinckley, I know you've been sitting on all those discussions from the safety committee. Either one of you guys want to update the board?
I would rather do it in the town administrator report, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Lake Street invoices. We have some discussion, I would imagine, over the guardrails and Chapter 90 funds. I'm assuming by the paperwork that's inside this packet. So I'll turn that over to you, I assume, Mr.?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I know there's been some discussion about the funding of this, but, you know, when I took over the project in 2020, I and the committee was working under the assumption that the guardrails would be paid by existing Chapter 90 funds. That commitment was already made, and that if there was any gap, then the article that we got would help fill in those gaps. And I'm looking back, you know, trying to track it down, looking at the paperwork, and it looks like that on page two, the project request was approved on 8/10/2018 for $36,000. And so, again, I don't want to say it all comes out of the same pot, but it doesn't. And I just want to make sure that we're all in alignment with using these funds for this. I don't believe it's taking from any other projects in town. It is, you know, the guardrails, not really beautification. Those are safety, those are road-centric project. But just wanted to bring it back to the board and make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, I know that Mr. Kelly sent out an email, I don't know, a week or two ago, saying that the funds were gonna come from the article, and then it's over here. And I remember doing something in the past. I know it was voted on multiple times over the years. I think it started in 2014. It originated at like $14,000. Supposedly, there was, I don't know if there was ever a vote in '18. I didn't recall it, but Mr. Noble and Ms. Hebert, the town accountant at the time, signed off on it, which they had then authorized to do it. So I just don't know whether, if it even stood, you know, legal vote by us, the board, but neither here or there. It is in front of us. I know that there was, I had some discussion in the third page, whatever, fourth page describes that there's some funds in the article. So my question would just be is, I know there's enough money in the article to cover the cost, and we talked about not using funding for guardrails, but if you, or the committee, feels that the $38,000 that you have left in the article needs to be held for an expenditure that's urgent. If that's the case, we can surely have that dialogue.
Right. Yeah, so, again, we've been operating under the assumption that the guardrails would be paid for out of Chapter 90, and that's how we've been budgeting and approving projects. The weed remediation is that number that's left in the article, right? And so I don't have a problem if we have to use that since we're not doing weed remediation right now. If we need to use that funds to do the guardrails, we would then go back to town meeting to ask for money to do the weeds. I just want to make sure that the taxpayers and anybody who's been watching this project is involved to know that we did not misappropriate funds and we weren't paying attention to the budget and weren't being sloppy with our accounting. So when people say, "Well, you ran out of money. I can't believe you ran out of money. Now we can't do the weeds because you ran out of money." That's not the case. We were operating under the assumption that that money would be there We were operating under the assumption that that money would be there, because the guardrails would be taken out of Chapter 90. Again, I'm happy to explain to the town meeting, I'm happy to explain it away, but you know how rumors start?
Sure, sure, there's a ton of false ones going around town.
Anyway, I just want to put that out there, that we do not, that the Lake Street Committee did not.
Run out of funds.
Run out of funds. And the reasons why the weeds aren't getting done now, it's not because we ran out of money, it's because of the method that was being used, is called into question, we're looking at an alternative. So, so again.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, Selectment wanna, because I know, I'm not a social media guy, and I will be, or I hope I never have to be. It's possible, I guess, but hopefully not.
No, it's kind of.
Right. And I do know that those rumors were flying around about running out of funds, and it's not the case. And I appreciate that, okay.
And unfortunately, I would say.
Transparency to our, to our residents is most important, right?
The rumor, the rumor was perpetuated in-house by staff, and so that's how it made its way out into the general public, it was stated at an actual public meeting. And so the people who were talking about that, it wasn't rumor, I guess, well, it was rumor, but it was misinformation that was being spread by our own, our own folks.
There was no clarification.
Right. So here we are, back with a simple question is, look, I don't know what the plan is. If we, if we, I'm doing weed remediation until whenever, and we don't need to sit on the article that was the thirty-eight thousand that's sitting there, we could still pay for all of that out of that, and we go back to Fall Town Meeting, and we get an appropriation that's more appropriate for what the scope of service is gonna be in the future. You know, for the weed abatement, I know we talked about, I had a conversation with Mr. Daggett and Mr. Kelly over hydro reken versus chemicalizing ponds, because of the people that are turning water off, or the agricultural folks and things of the like. It stirred up a big thing. I watched a little bit of a conservation meeting where everybody was up and arms, and they have every right to be with, if they're feeding their crops with Lake Street water, and they do have permits, because I went through that whole hoopla. So I think there's gonna be some reconsideration there and start doing a different method of weed remediation, so I'm kind of leaving it to you and your folks. If you need, if we need to go and still, and use the Chapter 90, I'm not gonna say I'm against it, I think there's a lot of road work that we need to do, thirty-eight thousand carries a lot of weight. If not, and, and you folks need the money, and you don't feel comfortable with doing an article at Fall Town Meeting, and you want to keep the thirty-eight thousand secure from the previous article, I'm okay with that as well. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna have that back and forth amongst other members of the board and have that over thirty-eight thousand dollars. We've got many other fish to fry, my friend, and, and I'm here to work with the board and figure out a solution to this problem, because I, I can tell you this, we absolutely need to do something with those weeds, because those ponds are horrendous, and, and it is an asset to the community, even though it's not ours, I get it, but we can't let that happen, and we should open up discussion with the city in New Bedford as well, but that's.
So here's my, here's my, here's my only concern. When, when we've originally presented this to town meeting in 2020, we said, okay, this is what we think it's gonna cost, because we weren't factoring the guardrails.
Correct.
My only concern, again, is messaging in words, you know, we say like, words matter, that if we exhaust these funds now, and we're starting with a zero balance, then the ask at town meeting becomes, it could be fifty thousand, it could be sixty thousand, right? But if we already have thirty-eight in the bank, then, then we're asking for twenty thousand. You know what I'm saying? So I'm just concerned about people saying, oh my gosh, we're not gonna spend sixty thousand all day. I'm just concerned about that, because initially, we told them that we thought we'd have to cover it, so. I mean, I understand the road projects, I get it.
Yeah, yeah, whatever, whatever we want to do. Mr. Hinkley, you have anything?
I'm a big fan of progress, and I think we've done a good job with this. Scott Daggett, Selectment wanna, did an excellent job, and no matter what we do, people are gonna be upset about how we do it. So the way I look at it is, we still, the number one plate is the weeds.
Yeah.
We gotta do it, and I, I can agree with Selectment wanna on this one, that it'll be a lot easier to appropriate a smaller sum at Fall Town Meeting than it would be, depending on what our cost for weed abatement would be. So I, I don't have a problem with keeping it the way it is.
I mean, it is, and this is a road project, the guardrails are a road project.
Look, we've vetted it out, I think we've had the conversation, I think people at home get it, understand what's going on. You know, we're gonna need a little bit more money to help us out in getting, you know, the weeds out of the ponds, whatever it may be, but, so let's just make a motion, I think we need to clean this up, then we'll just make a motion to secure the guardrail funding out of Chapter 90 funds.
Thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Is that, is that the real number? Because I know there's some math in the back, that was.
Thirty-seven hundred, thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Yeah, we have that. Thirty-seven, is that, is that the real number? Okay. Is there a motion?
Out of, that was the Chapter 90.
Yep. So you got the number, just read off the number and say that you take it from.
Thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Chapter 90.
Motion to approve the sum of thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the Lake Street guardrails appropriated out of Chapter 90.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
What, gentlemen, while we're on the subject of Lake Street, if I could, I guess, it should fall into the open meeting, is that, one thing that's been brought to my attention is if we can put some reflectors on the guardrails. So, you know, we can talk to Dan about that, and create a motion around it, but I just want, I think that might be something that we should look into, is that, you know, I guess there's an optical illusion that the road somehow got narrower, right? So by having, by.
Why, because I can't drive into the ponds anymore?
By having, I think having some reflect, reflectors on the guardrails might help alleviate that misnomer, so.
And I, we're working on some lighting as well, right?
Yes, yes.
You know, I had a conversation with some folks about that, that are actually working on that, so.
Okay. Dan might actually even have some reflectors at the yard, so it might work.
All right. All set. Next one is forty-eight, Galette Street rider first refusal. The Board of Selectmen voted on September 13, 2022, during their regular meeting to forego the rider first refusal for this property. Now there is a qualified buyer for the housing. Jamie needs to sign off on the acknowledgement of this in the purchase price. The problem is, there was a letter, and we haven't found that letter yet, but there was a letter that was sent back, I don't know if it was from the attorneys or from the bank, with something that this, this is considered affordable housing, out of affordable housing stock, that neighborhood actually was put in, and we have a very low affordable housing stock. I think the town of Acushnet is somewhere around two percent. And this, when I seen that letter, Mr. Kelly and I were doing other things and waiting for it to come back up, well, it finally reaped its, the reaper's head over here, and the only concern that I have, because back then, it wasn't anything that I was told that this was coming out of our faulty, our low-income housing stock. And if you read number six, under the eligible purchase certificate, the last sentence says, eligible purchaser's certificate, the rights, restrictions, agreements, and covenants contained in the existing D rider shall be null and void. So with that said, I don't know what that really means, without speaking to whoever this person is, or whoever the bank may be, but we didn't have time to contact them, but if that's the case, and we're taking housing out of our affordable housing stock, I don't know how that would work for us as a municipality. And the purchase price is two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars, so where are those affordability limits from the state? That's the questions to be asked. Is it coming out of our, from that D rider, the old D rider? Everything being lifted as null and void? You know that D rider says it is affordable housing stock?
There is a notation about the Executive Office of Housing and LC.
Yep, but that changes from another, from another office, and that's the other part that was concerning to me, right?
And as I told the Chair, they want my signature, but I do not feel that I can sign it without board approval, so unless it's a specific vote of the board, I would not consider putting my signature to it.
So I don't know if the board wants to hold off to get more information on this property and get the answers that I've just outlined, the question, you know, answers to the questions I've just outlined. You know, I think we need to be building our affordable housing stock, not decreasing our affordable housing stock. I don't know what to say unless somebody can explain this better, I'm not an attorney with the legal stuff, but I am smart enough to read this document and say, sounds to me like it's coming out of affordable housing stock.
Yep.
So, does the board want to hold it and wait for more information?
Mr. Chairman, I would definitely like to see some more information.
Okay, is there a motion to hold? Have you gotten more information?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. So the next discussion, we actually got on the whole business. It's 55 housing discussion. We've been in intervals here and there kicking that ping pong ball around. I know Mr. Wona had just won his election, both candidates were talking about it at Candidates Night, it's something that I'm passionate about for our community, as long as it's affordable, obviously, but it is 55 community housing. It's something I think our community lacks, and has for quite some time now. I think that I've heard enough, a lot from a lot of different residents that are selling their homes, Selectment wanna has mentioned it as well, people just can't stay in the town of Acushnet, right? Mostly, you know, the senior population that has the ability to sell their house and move into, you know, something smaller or a town home or condo, so. I, I felt it was the time to open up that discussion. We do have some interested individuals in the town looking to try to do something. In our bylaws, I think it's a one-liner or a two-line sentence, and it says, go to ZBA, and that's about it, right? To me, that's unacceptable. I think there needs to be a clear and transparent zoning bylaw pertaining to 55 community housing. Mr. Wona, you want to have, you know, you've talked about it again on your main kick.
Yeah, I mean, I think, look, it's something that's been hovering for quite some time, and I think, you know, again, not to repeat what you just said, but I think there's real opportunity, I think there's, again, misinformation about multi-unit housing versus eroding our, our character in town, and which people really, you know, feel strongly about, but the reality is, we have multi-unit housing, whether it's a form of mobile homes in different parts of town, we've got the old Acushnet Hospital, but if we had, you know, if we had something in place that we then could market, you know, in a very disciplined and responsible way, you know, in the center, on Main Street, we might have a nice 55 and older housing facility versus a solar farm, right, you know, right off, right off the Hamlet Street. So I think we've got to act, we've got to be proactive, but we want to be smart about it. We don't want, again, we want to maintain our role and character, and I think we can do that with, you know, transparency and getting the public's input on this stuff, but I don't believe it's as scary as people think it is, it's just progress, but I think we can do it in the right way, so. I'd love to be part of it.
Just to piggyback on that, what's more scary than going through this progress would be having our 55 and older community having to leave this town. I think we've got to definitely tackle this, and, you know, the more hands involved, the better. Let's get some ideas and community involvement, and we can make this work.
Yep, I would just, you know, I would actually have Selectment wanna, if you wouldn't mind, kind of be the liaison towards the planning board to work on something with the planning board. I mean, it's really their jurisdiction, but it's up to us to put things on the warrant, so I think that, you know, co-mingling, a member of the Board of Selectmen as a liaison over the planning board, when they're gonna have that discussion about 55 housing, you know, development for a bylaw, drafting that kind of a bylaw, I think it would be prudent to have Selectment wanna, our liaison to do that. And all I would ask is that, you know, the emphasis is bring us back a responsible, something of our own. I mean, we always look at other people's bylaws, and we can take what we like out of things, and I'm sure that's probably what's gonna happen now, but let's make sure that we bring a responsible 55 community housing zoning bylaw to town meeting numbers, right?
And I would just ask if you, Mr. Hinkley, would meet separately with Mr. Kelly, and just give him sort of your thoughts, like if you had a perfect, in a perfect world, what would it look like for you? And I'll take that back, probably say I can't do that because of.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you can communicate that to Jamie.
Absolutely.
I'll work with him, do the blocking and tackling, and communicate on behalf of the board, and, you know, ultimately, hopefully get a product to the town meeting, and it's all about presentation at town meeting floor, so.
Correct.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Town owned parcels, under twenty thousand, I'm gonna pass over that, there's no new information, is that correct, Mr. Kelly?
Correct.
Nothing there? All right, so I'll pass over that, and the Town Administrator's report. Mr. Kelly?
Uh, through to the board. As of right now, we are looking at, the board preliminary voted to set the date of the Fall Town Meeting as November 6. The issues that have to be addressed are, in the fire department, AED purchases, that come from the opioid settlement and the ambulance reserve. Town accountant, one is looking to have the acceptance of the Omnibus Municipal Reform provision that changes new growth certification to correspond with the fiscal year instead of the calendar year. Town accountant also is asking that a warrant article be there for the fiscal year 24 budget to note the adjustment in revenues as the state budget changes, and reflect free cash certification. And also, he notes that there'll be some past year bills and possibly a judgment that this board and the FinCon have to determine where that is funded out, and if it comes from town funds. The Town Administrator's Office is looking for articles for authorization of town property sale. The first one would be by RFPCL, the Russell Memorial Library. And the second one would be as we go forward with the process for sale of small no-value lots.
Well, no value, well, we get the picture.
Yep.
The under twenty thousand, right?
Minimal value.
Yeah, so.
But it's, the no value is the quote-unquote that the DOR demands.
So the only, Mr. Kelly, can I stop you for a minute?
Sure.
So just on the Russell Memorial Library, I know in the past, we've had some conversations with multiple people the Board of Selectmen have, and I think that if, if there's gonna be a sale of that facility, I know that there's been some conversations about having an historical restriction on the outside, and things can't be changed and the things of the like, so whatever happens internal is one thing, I think keeping the external with the historical.
That's the RFP sale versus a straight auction. The Board of Selectmen under an RFP sale would keep total control of all of those conditions.
Very good, just making sure. Thank you.
The YES program, I've had discussions with Old Colony Co-op, their Co-op program, and I'd be looking to increase funding. We can discuss an amount as we get closer, but there's a certain amount for each Co-op program that, that covers the individual student coming here, two weeks out of the month, and two weeks going to school. They are looking, they have carpentry, they also have an IT, which could fill a gap in the IT office that we have. The, just so you know, the YES program for the summer was very successful. We had a number of people working in a number of offices. We are looking at the end of the summer to bring those folks in and have the board congratulate them, and to have them give a little feedback on what they learned in the YES program. CONCOM is looking to amend the stormwater bylaw. They'll hold the appropriate hearings prior to, to inform the public. Planning Board is looking to have certain. Planning board is looking to have certain changes to any bylaw that reflects a special permit, and the solar bylaw. Commonwealth changed the term of the special permits from two years to three years as far as the maximum. It allows the town to have less, but it has to be specifically stated in the bylaw. The planning board is looking to have it to go back to the two-year term limit.
Okay, very good.
We're looking, discussing a sewer bylaw amendment. It's not ripe yet, but the discussions are ongoing. As you said, the over fifty-five zoning bylaw amendment. We've had meetings with the planning board, and we're going to go forward with that. There is some request for discontinuances of stubs of paper streets. We will talk.
What is that?
You have a paper street crosses another street.
Like conduit street, is that one?
That would be one. When you were away with the boys with the, you know, the Bay routine that's at the bottom of Oliver Ave, and it goes directly across the bottom, and it's right in front of my buddy's house. And it's like a little piece that goes nowhere, because you can't go that way, because Robinson Avenue is that way, and there's already houses in the way, and you ain't going to go this way. So, it's kind of like, that's where you would just say wipe it out and make it non-existent.
And then with the CPC and this board, we have to discuss, like, street funding. And going forward, as you stated, the chemical weed mediation is probably not going to be an option, but there are other options. Mr. Daggett has had discussions, and we can go forward with that. And there's a placeholder on the ASME contract if there is a need as far as any of those changes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So, in the spring, we had talked about paying off some long-term debt with revenue that we collected. Remember, we had all these outstanding tax bills, and it was, we brought in right around four hundred and fifty thousand-ish in the document here. We talked about possibly paying off the school early, which, you know, I don't know if we still want to look into that or not, given the financial situation, but as we talked about, like, that's as close to a tax break that we can give to any of our residents wiping off that debt.
You do?
I don't know if we would do that here, you know, November town meetings. I just want to, you know, flag that and keep that conversation alive.
I'll talk to Hilltop, see which ones are available for early payoff and which ones are restricted. And we will, I'll bring that back to the board. Also, I'll talk to the accounting department to see all that funding we collected, whether that would be appropriate for the fall town meeting or the spring town meeting, because whether, you'd have to consider whether it's available now or it's available in future free cash. So, I'll see when it's certified.
So, regardless of what pool of money would be certified as free cash for what time of the year, we already know that free cash is going to be certified, right?
For the fall.
So, that's correct. So, no matter what pool of money, if there's, what he's alluding to, if there's two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand dollars of debt left there, we can pull it from any free cash that we want, and then the following year would be certified, and you'd have that money right back anyway. So, it doesn't matter if we're taking from Peter or Paul. We don't really have to prolong things. If we have free cash certified and available for fall town meeting, we can do it right there and then, and activate it right away.
So, we just.
And it would actually be more beneficial before we, I believe, this is probably a question for town accountant, but I believe it would be more beneficial for us to act on it for the fall town meeting, seeing how we have to do the tax classification hearing right around that same time period. If we're going to certify tax rate, we bring that tax rate down. That's the objective of the board.
And it would be, it could be better for the board when they're going forward, and we've got to convert the ban of the school roof to a bond, just as far as.
Paid for from solar rather than from.
Right, but.
Whenever that time's going to come.
But it's also, we're going, if we go out in the marketplace, especially now, whichever way the interest rates are.
Skyrocketing.
I mean, my discussion with the town accountant is, I've reached him, and he agrees that we might continue to ban it until we see where the interest rates are going.
You can talk about a financial plan on that down the road. I agree with that a hundred percent.
The tentative schedule for the fall town meeting is, we've checked the dates with the moderator, school, and town clerk. The preliminary said it as November sixth. Notice to the boards will go out, and committees and departments will go out. Boards and committees need to schedule public hearings, especially for the zoning. I've discussed it with the, both the chair of the ConCom and the chair of the planning board. You can close the warrant sometime in September twelfth or nineteenth would be advisable. That gives us enough time for, to draft the warrant, have you sign it, advertise it, and post. On administrative issues, I've written some paragraphs that I asked the board to review concerning vacancies and recruitment, and what's going on in other parts of the state. Presently, the town planner is advertised both full-time and part-time. We had a discussion about a sharing of a position with Fairhaven. They're just now going into negotiations with the planner, and they wouldn't consider it at this point. They might in the future. Facilities maintenance and ground maintenance, we've increased the hours of one maintenance worker. We've assigned seasonal E S worker to landscaping, and we just started the paperwork and approved a custodian for the COA.
Excellent, excellent.
Building commissioner, we've advertised full-time and part-time, same issue. Treasure collector, we've re-advertised, we've interviewed one candidate, and we're in discussion concerning another interim. I met with the golf course subcommittee or the greens committee, and I've met with the chair of the management committee. I've met with senior staff. There's still an issue about senior staff recognizing the contracting authority in the chain of command. We keep addressing it. The management committee needs to address it itself, and the management committee needs to report the consultant's recommendations when they're complete.
Yeah, so they got the final from the, I don't know if you were aware of it, but I just was made aware of it that they finally got that. So, they should, hopefully, they can come in at an upcoming meeting, right?
Right.
The committee, and give us an update on what their findings were, the consultants from Florida. So, that'd be interesting.
Town administrators brought in, EMA, fire, police, building, tree wardens, COA, director, DPW, and ever source for meetings on emergency response, especially hurricane preparedness. Interesting, we had a tornado today.
Just about a four-year, yeah.
And so, our, the worry, considerable worry is that the waters of Florida are ninety and a hundred degrees. And Noah's saying if we have one come up the coast, it'll be four or five.
As long as our water temperatures stay above seventy-five, we're in for a doozy.
Yeah.
So, hopefully, that doesn't happen.
I'm going to jump to health insurance and then go back to the apple peach.
Okay, boss.
For health insurance, there was a board meeting of the Mass Strategic Health Group, which is a new group we're with. I consider ourselves very lucky, because the first daughter of business that they addressed, we are now a board member, was a membership moratorium. So, we got in by the skin of our teeth. And we've designated the assistant treasure collector as the town representative on the board. And so, the board knows, originally, we were looking at a conversion of the retiring plan in January. We've brought that forward to October. All the notifications to the retirees will take place that are already started. As far as the Apple Peach Festival goes, the Lions Club, two-day, two one-day licenses you took care of. We have discussed the various ways that we can deal with the parade, the traffic control, and security, and EMS on the festival grounds. For the parade, two officers and cruisers will be funded through overtime, that's town funds. For the traffic control, three police officers, town funds all through overtime. I checked with the town accountant, that is a valid legal expense. On the festival grounds, three police officers, detail. We're looking at approximate funds of two thousand six hundred and forty. That will be raised by the committee.
And hopefully, we'll have some contributions from some private businesses in town.
Yep.
By the time I'm done.
Yep, and they were talking, putting together a fund me page. For the festival grounds, one fire, the detail, that's also apple peach funds. For the ambulance, which will be at the ready, that's overtimes, that's town funds. And the police chief has been in discussion with DOT, Mass DOT, to ensure that the police department intends to shut down southbound traffic on Main Street between Light Street and Robertson Road during the festival. Vehicle traffic will only be allowed northbound. The southbound lane will be cordoned off and become a pedestrian line.
That's good. The one line of bad news that I'll have to give out tonight is the cruise night will not happen this year again. Mr. Lopes is the one that gets everything all together, goes to all the other cruise nights, you know, classic cruisers, other places, and passes out our flyers. His daughter's getting married that same week, so we were working on a change of date. It's just never going to happen now, because those, that ball was dropped. So, there's nothing that I can do. I do, I am in conversations with some other folks to kind of redesign Cruise Night, possibly on private property down the road. So, we'll figure that out. But unfortunately, this year, it's too late for us to try to organize anything, because most of the car cruisers are already over with. So, what I plan on doing, and maybe Mr. Hinkley, because this is something that we can do, and I don't think we have to, we'll be filing in an open meeting law, it's a cruise night, right? It's an event. So, I think that, I know that Yara, I'm an enthusiast just like I am, so maybe we can get ourselves, you know, a little more acclimated on when these other ones are happening, and try to take the bull by the horn, so that it's not going to be left in one person's hands to get the scheduling out there, and the flyers printed and everything else. And maybe we could do something down the road.
Absolutely.
With some, some other people volunteering to do it. But I know Selectment Mona, you've had some concerns about, you know, hitting the main street over here and closing down the road. It's something that some people like. Again, I am in a conversation with somebody with private property that's, you know, might be willing to invite us in and get it off the.
My feeling is, for whatever works, right? As long as it works, it's, I love the feel of the middle of town. I think that's awesome, it's fun, you know? I'm just repeating what Public Safety has said. If that's not the option, then there's other, I think, others.
Yep, so we'll figure it out. Maybe that's still going to be the case. Maybe it is still going to be, I can tell you, over all the years that I've done it, some of the drivers just get in an argument, right? Oh, who's going to be over here at the park, town hall, parking lot? Is it, is it my group, or is it the other group? I've been doing it for so many years, kick them out. And it just, that's not what this event's supposed to be about. It's supposed to be a kumbaya, everybody has fun, right? Listen to classic music. The fire department, their staff, the association cooks up the burgers. We have Acushnet Creamery serving up shakes. Matt usually does the clam cakes and fries and things of the like. And it's just that, it's a good time to listen to classic music for a few hours. But maybe we have to reinvent the wheel on this one. We'll have that discussion moving forward of what we can do for the future, and try to keep that, that Cruise Night alive, because I know there's a lot of people that are in the town that are really happy that that goes on in the town of Acushnet. So, it saddens me to tell everybody that it won't happen this year. But we'll try to do something next year and make it bigger and better than ever.
Excellent.
Anybody else got anything on Selectmen's announcements?
No, I think we're good.
You're good?
Yeah.
So, we do have, our next meeting will be a Board of Selectmen Soil Board meeting, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at the Council on Agents, six P M. Mr. Kelly and I have been working closely with the engineers from GeoSentec. We were in conversation with them today, scheduling a, you know, a pre-meeting to get us focused on what's going to be discussed, because, you know, I don't think it's fair that we wait for a hundred percent of the application to be vetted out, because we're never going to be, have enough time. So, what, what our plan is with, with the engineers is break it out into segments, maybe thirty-five, thirty-five, right? And move on, or maybe it's going to be forty, forty, twenty. We'll see what we can fit in and where the disagreement's going to be. I'll try to gauge based on what they bring and what I already know about the application, and see what timeframe that's going to be, because I really like to keep the public hearings to a set time, maybe a couple hours.
Sure.
Not drag it out too far, because after a couple hours, nobody's interested anymore. And I think a lot of people just get aggravated.
Yep.
And that's not going to be good for the process, especially when it's talking about the public hearing with PJ Keating. But I feel that we're in a pretty good place with GeoSentec in their peer review, so hopefully, we'll, we'll get through at least a third.
Sure.
Maybe a little bit greater than that on Wednesday night, so. Mr. Kelly will keep you two gentlemen posted after our meeting. We do have a scheduled meeting Thursday, is that correct? So, that's where we stand. Outside of that, the next Board of Selectmen's meeting preliminary will be set for August twenty-second. We'll determine the time later on when we get close to that, because I know that August is a busy vacation month for all of us. I know where I'm in and out, Selectment Mona's in and out.
I don't know what I'm doing.
Mr. Hinkley's got a new job, so he's, he's all over the map.
Yep.
With his traveling and things of the like. It's nice to have you back, Mr. Wona.
Thank you, thank you. I had the pleasure of following a baseball team.
The only thing nice about not you not being is I don't have to go like this all the time, but it was, it's, it's nice to have you back and having your involvement with the board.
I would ask the board members through the chair, the, after the twenty-second, if you do every other week, then the next meeting would be the Tuesday after Labor Day. I don't know if you want to do it that Tuesday, or you'd want to push it on a Tuesday to the twelfth.
We'll, we'll talk about it after, but thanks for bringing that up, that the holiday is there. And I think, you know, having, having a meeting, it's something I don't think that we like to do anyway. And I, and I look at Mr. Wona, because we've been on the board for quite some time together. I don't think it's, it's good business that we, you know, if you have a long holiday weekend, people try to enjoy that time with their.
Especially if they're away.
It's the kickoff, right? It's actually the end, oh, don't even talk about it. But anyways, but, you know, it's a, it's a long weekend. We like to take some time with our families and enjoy it. You know, we're all busy with our lives, and, well, little one I have, doing all the stuff that I do. But anyhow, we'll figure it out, but more than likely, Mr. Kelly, we will not. So, we'll figure out a schedule around that. But thank you for bringing it up. We can toss it around at our next meeting. Depending on where, where everybody's at, we could do a different day, but I prefer to skip it.
Yep.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.